This is just about.
I was a few minutes ago. He just rolled up down.
What?
Roll up down.
Yeah, what's going on here?
It's six thirty. We will call the Arapahoe County Planning Commission to order. It is Tuesday, December nineteenth, two thousand and seventeen. We have a forum of the board here, and we welcome all of you. I imagine some of you were here for one or more cases. Our first item of business is approval of the minutes from our November twenty-first, two thousand and seventeen meeting. Are any comments about the minutes, or can we have a motion? Catherine?
I wanted to approve the minute submitted on November twenty-first.
We have a second?
Second.
Mr. Rosenberg check in for motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The motion carries. Okay, the first item of business is case number U seventeen dash zero zero five, Hunter Solar. The planning commission is now holding a public hearing on that case. We will first hear from planning staff and the applicant. Members of the public will have a chance to speak after the applicant's presentation. Welcome.
There it is. Good evening, commissioners. I'm Diane Kosas, case planner on U seventeen zero zero five, also known as Hunter Solar. This is a full use by special review application with ten forty-one requirements. The applicant has met all public notice requirements thereby establishing jurisdiction for this hearing. This land development application is for a large utility-scale solar farm. The proposal is for a seventy-five megawatt solar facility on up to seven hundred and fifty acres. The applicant, Hunter Solar LLC, and four property owners, Larry and Helen Toth, MVM Properties LLC, John Henry Hyatt, and the estate of John R. Bikley, are requesting approval for this use by special review located northwest, southwest, and southeast of the intersection of East Quincy Avenue and Brick Center Road in eastern Arapahoe County. The project basically surrounds the eastern service center, if you reference. Staff are recommending approval with five conditions of approval based on findings contained in the staff report. Are there any questions before I proceed? Before we proceed, I did hand out a letter of objection that we received at three o'clock this afternoon.
And before you proceed, I neglected to mention that I have a passing acquaintance with one of the landowners in the past. We did a lot of work, perhaps by telephone, he prepared taxes for our HOA, and I just wanted to make that part of the record, and that will not in any way influence anything I hear tonight. Thank you.
I'd like to introduce Michelle Zierman, the applicant's representative, and she will-
Do you have a comment?
Oh, yeah, I have a question. Why did this letter just come this afternoon from Anadarko? Have they not been a part of the competition?
No, they were actually noticed just over a month ago. So it was a surprise to get this letter at three o'clock this afternoon.
Okay, and any contact with Anadarko, and they were noticed?
I believe Michelle Zierman, the applicant's representative, did speak with Anadarko.
Okay, well, I can wait and ask that during the applicant's presentation.
Okay, well, I'm gonna hand it over to Michelle, because she'll have a summary of the project.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you. My name's Michelle Zierman. I'm with Cypress Creek Renewables. And just to answer your question, I haven't spoken directly with Anadarko. The company that is leasing the minerals from Anadarko is ConocoPhillips, and they did contact us over a couple of weeks ago. And so we've been working, we've been talking with ConocoPhillips about surface use agreement and whatever we need to do to make sure that we work with them.
So they represent an Anadarko's interest in the area?
They don't represent Anadarko. They have the lease from Anadarko for those minerals. And correct me if I, is that correct? Okay.
So Conoco has some stuff.
To be able to develop those minerals, yes. Yep. I have printed copies of my presentation, if anyone would like one. You're welcome to them. And, yeah, and as we go through, feel free, I know I've been before you a couple of times, feel free to stop me anytime with questions, or, you know, we can go through the full presentation, whichever. So again, just a little refresher about Cypress Creek. We're about three and a half years old now. I think that first time I was before you, we were only three, so we're growing fast. We are really focused on being a community partner to develop local solar. We're working in about twelve states, and these projects are going to be some of our first in Colorado. Little overview where we're looking, you'll see the twenty-eight megawatts in Colorado. As you know, we've had two projects come before you. They were both ten megawatts AC, fourteen megawatts DC, so there's that twenty-eight there. Those have been before the Board of County Commissioners and were approved. So that's how we get to that number. This is a little hard to see. You don't need to know all the little words. Again, if you recall that first presentation, when we talked about Bennett Solar, my colleague Jeff Weber was here and really dove into the solar one-on-one technical engineering, hard and fast rules of how solar works. And so I'm not going to go into all that, but I thought this was a nice slide to give everyone in the audience a little idea of how this, how a solar farm, how a solar facility works. And so we are currently in stage two, planning and development. Then we go into, of course, building the farm. We already went through stage one of meeting with landowners and selecting the site. And I will go into some of the details of how we selected this site specifically. Then we go into commissioning, energizing, and finishing and maintaining and continuing to manage the project. So I wanted to jump, this presentation's a little different, a lot different than the ones we've done before, mainly because, as you guys know, this is a much bigger project. And I think last time, I was before you, I said I'd be back with a much bigger project next time. So we did hold a public meeting on December sixth, and I wanted to address some of the community concerns that have come up, both in that meeting, over email, over the phone, various different ways of communication. So I wanted to address some of the things we've heard, and then, of course, we'll hear, you know, more after the presentation. So one of the things that we've, oh, that one's tough, okay. One of the things that we have heard a lot about is, how do you, why here? Why not over there, or over there? So I just wanted to go through all the different things that go into selecting a site, because you can't just put solar anywhere. There's quite a few things that restrict, and if you ask some of our partners that go out and look for lands that are ideal for solar, they'll tell you how tough it is. There's a lot of parameters on it. One of them is interconnection. We can't, it's, electricity isn't completely wireless yet, so we do have to be within a mile or two from a substation, or within a line, a power line that's sufficiently sized. The topography, if we can have a big flat square, that's gonna be the best thing we can. We can deal with some slight topography, but we, you know, big hills and canyons and cliffs and steeps, it's, that's gonna make it tough to develop solar. Access, just like anything, we've got to have adequate access, a right of, off a right-of-way. Wetlands and flood zones, riparian areas, we can't, you know, just like anything, we've got to make sure we respect setbacks and we stay out of those areas. Co-location, that's another, when you're building larger solar projects, the FERC, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, does require you to be a certain distance apart from one another, so you can't just put these things side by side. Environmental issues, of course, we look at TNE species, seasonal restrictions, closures. We work with US Fish Wildlife Service, Colorado Parks and Wildlife.
I have a question.
Please.
How far apart?
It depends on the state, and I think, I think it's gotta be two miles from one another, but I have to double-check that with local PUC.
Thank you.
And that does have to do with, it's the size of the system as well. But, yeah, I can get back to you on that specific. One big one, of course, is land cost and willing landowners. Solar, you know, as Jeff Weber talked about, solar prices have come down a lot since two thousand and ten, but we still, you know, it still requires a land cost that we can afford to make the project work, especially in Colorado, where our, our energy prices, fortunately, are pretty, pretty, pretty good still. They're pretty small compared to other states. So we've got to find land costs that work. You know, if you have an area, if you have landowners that are in an urban growth corridor or a commercial future planning area, they aren't necessarily going to want to have solar. They're gonna want to hold out and build a commercial or retail or something there. So that's, willing solar is a big one, or less leased site. In this situation, we are leasing, we are not purchasing, but in some situations, we do purchase the land. Site selection continues, three more. Property taxes, that's one area. Sometimes we will select an area because property taxes are more favorable. Solar resource is a big one. You can imagine, although they're certainly, they have solar in the Seattle area and in the San Francisco area, it doesn't produce as well as it does in Colorado, we just have more sun. And even in, even from area to area in eastern Arapahoe County, that solar resource does change. So, for example, if you have an area that slopes slightly to the north, that's not going to produce as well as an area that's flat or slopes slightly to the south. So that, that solar resource can change from mile to mile. And then off take, of course, we need someone to buy the power that's produced. So in this case, of course, it's IREA, but it could, there could be situations where there's a substation that the utility that owns that substation doesn't have the want or need or ability to buy the energy, or that substation may not have the applicable number of bays or number of equipment, the right equipment to tie in solar. So there's a lot of, a lot of things that go into where, where these, where solar facilities can be located. Another community concern that came up, of course, is property valuation, and I know we heard that at the Wolf Creek hearing as well. And again, you know, one of, one of the main, one of the big things we want to make sure we do is, we, of course, do not want to, we want to be partnering with the community. And so we have hired with American Valuation Partners to take a look at all of our sites, and we had a report done for Bennett and Wolf Creek, and we've had a report done for Hunter as well, which I'll share with Diane to share with you guys if you'd like. And at this point, with both our reports we've done here in Colorado and all the appraisers we've worked with throughout Oregon, North Carolina, various different other areas we work, to date, there's no, there, no data exists that supports a reduction in property values around solar facilities. Another concern is Viewshed. I do have photo renderings in the end of the presentation, so we'll get to those, and I have some, some pretty good, I think the photo renderings turned out really, really nicely. And of course, we are continuing to work with some additional landowners to get renderings from their specific properties, and not just a general, from the intersection of Brick Center and Quincy. And then, of course, we want to work with the landowners on trying to mitigate that impact. A few more concerns. So sound is a concern. I know Jeff talked about this. The, the sound that the transformers and the inverters put off is at fifty-eight decibels, which is a little higher than a library, a little lower than conversation, so loud conversation apparently is right at sixty to sixty-five decibels, and the transformers at fifty-eight, so it kind of helps you think about noise. At a hundred and fifty feet from, you can't, you can't hear them at all. The PD panels are made of glass and aluminum, there's no fluids or chemicals, nothing to leak. Safety, of course, we're making sure that everything is designed by licensed engineers as required by the county. Everything is National Electric Code compliant. We will talk about the perimeter fence that's, that's part of National Electric Code. We have ongoing operations and maintenance. We need this thing to continue to produce well. We can't have a bunch of, you know, aluminum glass out there not doing anything, because that's how we end up making our company work. And then any sort of stormwater, grading, erosion, any of those road use permits, all of that comes in. So our safety is incredibly important, not only to meet the county standards, but also for our own emergency management plans and that kind of thing. Construction, I know this has been a community concern, what's gonna be the dust, what, what is the impact from traffic? It is a nine-to-twelve month timeframe that, of course, varies, you know, you're not gonna have big old trucks delivering panels every day for nine to twelve months. That's gonna happen for a short period when the panels are, are being delivered. But the full, from ground break to commissioning is, can be up to a year on this size system. We have access drives, which you'll see in the site plan. Dust abatement will be through water trucks, and of course, we'll have, you know, portable toilets and wash stations, dumpsters, all of that. So one of the concerns that was, that's been brought up is local solar and ag lands. And so I know with eastern Arapahoe County, I know the comp plan calls for that area to, to be predominantly agricultural lands. And so some of the work we've done has looked at the compatibility with solar and agricultural lands. So some of the few points to make, the nice thing about solar is it does provide a consistent source of revenue for landowners. So sometimes if, you know, we all have who knows why reasons that our income changes and our revenue sources change, and so this is a nice expected lease revenue source year after year. It's a low impact to the land. It, once the racking, as I mentioned, goes in like fence posts and comes out like fence posts. So while the solar is there, it can allow the land to rest and, you know, recover and be ready to go again at the end of the life of the project. We, of course, have a vegetation management plan. We need to make sure that we have a short-growth ecosystem, because we don't want grasses growing up and shading our panels, but also, you know, it's, it's part of our work with the Bennett Fire Protection District. Controlled noxious weeds, of course, I know we talked about this at Wolf Creek. This is incredibly important to us as well, not only for our work with Bennett Fire Protection District, but also just for our own, making sure that we're maintaining our vegetation management plans, so making sure that it's contained, that our, we don't have any noxious weeds, nothing is coming onto our land or going on. And then, as I mentioned, once the land is decommissioned per our lease agreement, it goes back to what it was. I think you guys have seen these pictures before, just some images of what a single-axis tracker looks like. And then going into the specifics of Hunter Solar, this map is the, the lease area map. It's, I'll get to the panel layout map. Again, we're calling this project Hunter Solar. The namesake is here in the audience, so that's kind of fun. The property owners, as Diane mentioned, the Toths, the Moors, the Hyatts, and the Bikleys, we're looking at about five hundred and fifteen acres that would actually be developed. Of course, when we first look at a site, we want to look at as much acreage as we can and then figure out, okay, we've got a wetland here, riparian area there, setbacks here, and so we figure out where we can squeeze in, and this one is about five hundred and fifteen acres that we'll actually be putting solar on. Eight to ten foot, depending on topography, will be the height of the panels. Mentioned it's a single-axis tracker, not a fixed tilt, so it does follow the sun. Fence will be an eight-foot chain link, that's the National Electric Code and Colorado Parks and Wildlife, we talked about that as well, that Colorado Parks and Wildlife would like it to be eight feet without any wire on top to make sure that animals aren't getting stuck inside or outside or getting caught in any wires. We can't do privacy slats along right-of-ways. I know, I spoke with someone at facilities that was concerned or maybe interested in snow fence, so privacy slats may be desired or not desired because of what it might do to snowdrifting, so certainly some room to talk about fence type and where to have privacy slats, where not to. Power output, the number is big, but enough to power about sixteen thousand, six hundred and seventy-five homes. And the customer is Intermountain Rural Electric Association, and same minimum term of twenty years, maximum of forty years per hour lease. So this is the north half. I'm gonna quickly jump to the south half and go back, so you get an idea. It's a rectangle shape, so I had to put it on two slides. So in this, in this picture, right across the middle is Quincy, across the middle up and down is Brick Center. We have access drives for each kind of section that we're, we're gonna be working in. The eastern service center is kind of right in the middle, in the southwest corner of Brick Center in Quincy. And then the south part, that's Bellevue, that's kind of running across the middle, it's just a dirt road in that area, and then that's the Brick Center substation, right, right in the middle of that image. And then we can go back to that if, back to either of those if we need to. So I've just got a couple more, and then we'll go to photo renderings, and I will open up for a question. Couple, a few of the benefits that are, I think, important, I know we talked about this again on others, but one of the things is we did meet with the Division of Property Taxation, and we got a better understanding. So projects in renewable energy projects greater than two megawatts in size, and I know a lot of the solar gardens are less than two megawatts, so it's different, but the state actually does the valuation for renewable energy projects greater than two megawatts in size. They don't collect any of the taxes, they just do the valuation. That goes down to the assessor, to Mark and Karen and their staff, and then that way, there's a, I think, then the county then does all of the distributing it out to the taxing authorities per the mill. So we're looking at roughly about three hundred and fifty thousand dollar range for property taxes each year for twenty years. And just to get an idea, about a hundred and fifty thousand of that would go to the school district, and of course, we're not adding any, any people requiring, you know, those kind of county services, so that's, that's a good influx. During construction, we're looking at about twenty-six million dollars of direct spending into the local economy. Total jobs, we're looking at about a hundred and sixty-eight, and I know that doesn't seem like much, but we also aren't gonna have, you know, ongoing, lots of people out there, offices, traffic, things like that. As I mentioned, the nice thing about these solar energy facilities, they do allow us to maintain large tracts of land, and that, by doing that, it precludes other types of potential development. Having local clean solar, clean renewable energy helps to diversify the electrical mix, and it contributes to IREA and, and Excel Energy, both of their renewable energy standard, the portfolio that they need to meet per the state requirements. And then another number here, the building permit fee, we estimate it to be right in that five hundred thousand dollar range, so that's an immediate income to the county as well. And Cypress Creek has been really proactive in working with STEM education, and so that's something that, you know, we want to make sure that we're, again, partnering with the community with local academic institutions, however that might look. So the photo renderings, I have six of them, and this is where it might be helpful for me to hand, hand out the prints, so I'll do that. But you can kind of get an idea, so photo simulation eight, so the first photo is from the farthest left spot on Quincy. So if you're going, if you were on Quincy, traveling east and looking northeast, that's what we think it would roughly look like in the afternoon. Again, these are simulations that doesn't have the fence in there, so there would be an eight-foot fence with or without privacy slats, depending on what you guys want to do there. And then the next one, number three, is going east along Quincy, looking southwest. So you're looking past the, the service, the eastern service center there for the county. Would you like these handouts? Would that be helpful? How's magic? I don't know how you can sip that. Totally missed. And then number, number five, five and seven and four are all at that Quincy and Brick Center intersection, it's just a matter of which perspective. So number five, you're looking south along Brick Center, so you're standing at the Quincy-Brick Center intersection, looking straight down Brick Center. So the eastern service center would be on your right, and you'd be looking left onto the parcel that would be just north of the substation. Number four is looking southeast along Quincy, so you're on Quincy, looking in that southeast direction. And then two more. Number seven is looking northwest along Brick Center, again, this is skimming out that Quincy-Brick Center intersection. And then ten is looking east off Brick Center, so that's right, kind of in the middle of Brick Center, looking due east. And that's what I got.
Are there any questions on that for the applicant? Mr. Rosenberg?
I have two. One, the land is de-commissioned per your lease agreement, and land is returned, thank you, to its original use at the end of the lease. How is that guaranteed?
That's in our lease, in our lease terms, and it is the responsibility of the tenant in our, in our lease.
And if you are not in business anymore, because you've only been in business-
Yep.
-three and a half years.
That's why the project is called Hunter Solar LLC. So we create a special purpose entity for each of our projects, and that LLC lives on whether Cypress Creek goes away or not. And that LLC is what, that's where the money goes through, it's where the operation maintenance comes through, the asset management. Everything is managed out of that LLC. So if Cypress Creek were to go away, the LLC has already set up line items that, you know, if an inverter goes down, it has to be replaced. If the vegetation grows over whatever height, it has to be mowed.
It's a self-entity.
Yes.
Okay. The other question, you commented about Bellevue, and I don't know if Bellevue is in the county's long-range transportation plan. I know the county's trying to do more east-west roads.
Yeah.
What if the county wanted to have a road through there?
There is already a double-track dirt road. There is already a double-track dirt road, dirt gravel road in there. I can go back to that image. We are, we are setback off of that road, well off of that road. On the north, we're setback, uh, give me just a second. There we go. So on the north, you can see we're setback, the furthest we come down to it is, is 100 feet, because the setbacks are 100 feet off of, off of right of way. And then on the south, we're setback even more because we have that overhead transmission line, so we have to be outside of that corridor, not easement.
Yep. Your line questions.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. You may come back later with more.
Okay.
Okay. Do you want me to leave this on any specific slide, or? I don't think we need it. Okay. If we do, we'll call you. Okay, we're now going to open a public hearing, and any members of the public who wish to speak will be given an opportunity. You don't have to have signed in, and we also want to let you know that there is an audio recording, which serves as the official record, so it's important to use the microphone at the podium. And you will be given three minutes for each speaker, and we will call you to the podium, and you address your comments to the planning commissioner. So we will look at the list of who signed in. We have a few names here. The first one is Brent Beckley, who's in favor. Does he want to come forward and speak?
No.
And we have Kent Beckley. Do you want to come forward?
No.
We have Patrick Berenberg from Bennett. Would you like to come forward?
Yes, please.
Please state your name and your address for the record.
Yes, my name is Patrick Berenberg. My address, 4829 South County Road, 129 Bennett, 80102. And I would, I'm one of the adjacent landowners. I'm not sure if I'm for this or against it. I see pros and cons. There's always a bad side to a good side. There's always a price to pay for things. It's never a win-win. You know, solar's good clean energy, and we've seen that through the presentations in the past, but there's also concerns. Sometimes we have to meet in the middle, you know, two sides, just like in politics. But my concerns are the wildlife, you know? I see the wildlife at my door. It's going to be pretty much, pretty close to me. I'm pretty well going to be surrounded by solar. Mineral rights are concerned. Does the solar trump your mineral rights? Does it deter your mineral rights? Would conical anadarko have a negative impact on maybe later an oil lease? Because would they want to affect a well next to a solar development? Probably not. Would be my first thought. Bankruptcy, which was mentioned, what happens 10 years down the road? Anybody can go bankrupt, as we know. And have we had input from the FSA Office, the Farm Agency? That's where some of my income comes from as a farmer, rancher. And how about the Colorado Wildlife? What is their input on it? I don't know if I heard anything from them. So there's concerns. Like I say, I'm not exactly for or against it. I don't know. I have more questions, but there are also detrimental things, and just the side of, you know, the solar panels out your back door, your side door. So just concern, and traffic, and chobs, and dust, and... So yeah, there's, there's always two sides to this story, so just wanted to stress that. So I thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, the next one on our list is Harold Arnold Hollingsworth. Please state your name and address for the record.
Arnold Hollingsworth, East End Advisory Committee. I live at 5553 East Kentucky. One thing I didn't hear during the presentation was a water usage by the facility, potential water usage, which I think is a concern, as well as the land. You know, I guess for 40 or 50 years, I've heard people talking, I've also said the same thing, until we continue to take land out of production, and if so, how long? It, it is a concern, because the water, as well as the land, there is a definite limit to the resources, and how long can we do that? However, having said that, it isn't enough. That statement doesn't stand alone. If we're intelligent people, we can come up with a plan. And I think common sense tells us we're going to need more and more energy as we go along. So is it going to come from solar? It could. So what I'm saying is that I am against taking the land out of production on one hand. On the other hand, we've got to have a plan. We can either plan properly ahead of time, or we're going to be doing crisis management later. So I think the common sense approach, when we can get some good intelligent heads together, we can come up with a solution. Can we take some more land out of production? If we do that, how are we going to do it viably? If we can't do it viably, then I think we better not do it. Can we produce an energy another way? Well, at first glance, this seems to be a pretty good way. It's working around over some parts of the nation. So I think there's a good potential here. We've got to work this, folks. We need a plan. We need a plan. Some of the lack of planning I've seen, and I don't want to point any fingers, but I've seen some people around Watkins, and one of them I know personally, his irrigation wells were shut off so that expansion coming east could have water for these pilgrims, excuse the expression, to anybody that wanted to have 40 acres or whatever and have two horses and a dozen chickens. We've got to have a better plan than that, folks, because even if you didn't take his land out of production, you, you've done so by taking the water away. And I say you, I don't know that I'm pointing fingers at you guys. We could say this Colorado Water Engineers, you're at fault. Well, aren't we all a little bit, if we haven't drawn a plan? So what I'm saying, folks, we need a plan.
Thank you. You have three minutes.
Thank you.
Okay, the next person listed is Chris Haas. And from Williamson, does he want to speak?
No.
Okay. And the next one is George Hyatt.
I'll, I'll say something real quick.
Okay. Please state your name and address.
George Hyatt. I live at 6067 South Walden Court in Aurora, Colorado, and we're one of the landowners. So I really wasn't going to say anything tonight, but there were a couple of things that Paul maybe had talked about that I thought were extremely important to, I know us as a landowner, I'm sure the others, talking about the failure of Cypress. And we had probably no less than three lawyers looking at the contract and the agreement. That was the centerpiece of our concern. And what they've done, what Cypress has done, is they've created the Hunter Solar LLC, so that if Cypress fails, it really would not have an impact on Hunter Solar. It stands alone as an asset unto itself. It generates income from the revenue from IREA. The panels have value, and the lease agreements have value. The property is still ours, though. So if, if Hunter Solar LLC were somehow to be so mismanaged that it were to fail, there would be a price that another buyer would come in and buy it and make it feasible once again. So as a landowner, that was our biggest concern, and I'm very comfortable that that is not going to be a, you know, terrible on the landscape. It will not be neglected. It's worth too much. Someone's also talked about, it's, it's super clean, you know? The solar is super clean. Like, like Michelle had pointed out, there's no, there's no chemicals, there's no fluids. It's silent, and it just, it just creates electricity. When you farm land out there, a lot of the farmers have gone to the chemical rather than the, running the tills and the plows. And I think the chemicals may have less, more of an impact on the environment long-term than what I see basically no impact that the solar farm might have. Also do know that you do have to run the plows occasionally, you have to drill the wheat, you have to cut the wheat. That creates more dust than this will every year. Soil erosion, it's something we, we fight all the time in Colorado, because it's so dry, and then we get heavy rains, you get wind, and you can create terrible soil erosion. But because of the lack of tilling or farming of any kind, I think you'll preserve the, the topography of the land. I think that the county needs this kind of electrical power in the grid, because the demand, I believe, is going to increase with the electric cars. And I think that the urban growth further east is going to create more and more commuters and more and more demand for electric cars, and they're going to need that electricity. It needs to be clean. So from environmental impact, I strongly believe that. It brings commerce to the area where there seriously was none. It's just not a lot of money in farming wheat out there. And there's no traffic for the commerce. That's about all I want to say. Thank you.
Have a question.
Yes, sir.
Does, do you, are you part of the LLC as one of the landowners?
Yes, sir.
So the rest of them are?
I'm not a landowner. We've signed a lease.
Yes.
That lease is, is an asset to the LLC. But you're not-
Like part of the LLC, a partner in the LLC?
No, not at all.
Okay.
No, not at all.
The second question is, have you farmed that land?
Forty, seventy-two. Forty-five years.
Forty-five years. And you don't plan to farm anymore, so you might as well do something with it?
Well, we lease it out. My dad is alive, he's eighty-four. You know, the family has no intention of selling it, so it's really us to hire best use for the property for us, as far as, as well as the county. But now it is being farmed. We lease it out to farmers that farm it for us.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, guys? Thanks. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The last person who resigned in is Hunter Hyatt. Do you wish to speak? Okay. Is there anybody else that would like to come forward on this project? Yes, please come forward. Please state your name and address.
It's Jackie Dieter, 3757 South County Road, 129 Bennett, Colorado. Can I show you some pictures? This is out our front door. This is off of my porch. How far that's going to be right there.
Could you go back to the microphone, and we'll pass you?
I know she had mentioned that it's not going to take down our property value. This, we're talking less than, how far is that? Fifty feet?
The thing is going to be 130.
130 feet from my front door, that this is going to be put up. The fence, and it's going to take away all of our views, all of our wildlife. That's all we'll see is fence out of our front door. My neighbor is here, too, and they have the same situation, because their house sits right on top of the hill, right beside where they're going to put that. So, you know, as far as property value, that's going to drop our property value down right away, because it cuts out all of our views, all of our wildlife, everything that we have. We've lived out here for over 21 years at this property. That just, to me, it ruins everything. The reason why we moved out here was for the peace and quiet and the, and the, all the views. We can see Pike's Peak, which is in one of those pictures. So an eight-foot, an eight-foot chain link fence right there, right in front of my window, of my door, right in my front door. That's one of my biggest points is for us, is where she showed you, it didn't show, the pictures that she showed you on the films didn't show our houses sitting right there. There's about three or four of us that are right on it. That was one of the things. And as far as the property values, there, I'm sure that we won't have anything in writing that says that we're, that it's not going to drop it. When we go to sell or anything like that, you know, with all that out of our front door, we're not going to have a chance. It'll drop everything that we have. And like the other people were saying that lived out there, the views and the wildlife, that's the biggest of our concerns. We see antelope up there every day, running across that field.
Just three minutes, and that's it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Is anybody else that wishes to come forward?
Can we keep those for the record, the pictures?
Yes.
Did you skip over the Allen Labs?
You may come forward. Just state your name and address, please.
Allen Labs, 3811, South County Road, 129. We live immediately north of the north field of this, these solar panels. There's been a lot of things said here tonight in favor of this, and I'm not completely against it, but you folks need to understand some facts that weren't brought for you. Mark Jirdmeyer, from the engineering manager for IREA, I talked to him on the phone. He's glad to talk to you. He has, he will not commit to this. They do not have a contract with this, these people. Hunter Solar, I cannot find anything on the internet about them. And whenever you see LLC, it's, there's only one reason for doing that, is to protect you financially. When you talk about Cypress Creek Renewables, they, you can Google them and find something out. One of the things you'll find out, that one of their main investors just invested $450 million, and it's from a Singapore-based investment company, Temasek, owned by the government of Singapore. None of these panels are coming from the United States, they're coming from China. Thirty percent of this project is funded by the United States government. It's on the taxpayers' back. There's tax credits involved on the open market. None of them are going to IRA, none of them are going to you. They're all going for sale on the open market. Don't be fooled, this is for a pro, for-profit-only company. They would not be getting money from Singapore, they would not be out of Georgia if it was for, strictly for renewable energy. Renewable energy is a good thing, but as a landowner just north of this, it will take the property values down. I'll never sell. We moved out there in 1971. We were the only house there. Now I'm going to be looking at 520 acres of solar panels. I mean, the rest of my life spent out there. So I, it, it just breaks my heart. We won't, we won't see the antelope. You need to get in touch with the Division of Wildlife. They're not on board with this. When I asked Michelle where the antelope is going to do, she said, well, it'll just have to go around. Maybe we got too many antelope out there now, I don't know. Other facts that you should know, you know, I think that's about it. I think that's all I need to say. Oh, the only other thing I want to say is, you know who else gets stuck with this, is the IREA customers, which is a cooperative. So, you know, we're going to have to pay- So, you know, we're going to have to pay for that. When they produce it, by law, I R A A has to buy it.
Three minutes.
Thank you.
I have a question. Could you repeat the name of the Singapore company? Pardon? Singapore company?
It's T E M A S E K.
Thank you.
And it's, it's owned, it's primarily ownership is by the government of Singapore.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does somebody else want to come forward? Please step forward. State your name and address for the record.
Yvette Kalashov, thirty-seven nineteen South County Road, one twenty-nine Bennett, Colorado. I live between Allen and Jackie. We have the same view as Jackie. This literally, the fence line is forty-five feet from our front door. It is about eight foot from our front yard, if you will, our seating area. So any way you cut it, we will have the noise impact because it's not far enough for what she said the noise impact would be. We also will lose the view of Pike's Peak with the fences and that is a selling point in Colorado. I came here not trying to necessarily be against, the more I hear, the more concerned I get, primarily because of the noise. My husband will want to speak to you about that. We moved out there to get away from it due to his disability. But the other issue is you're talking five-hundred-and-twenty acres. This is literally all we can see from our yard. You're talking about five-mile-high stadiums of solar panels, which will be all our view is. The whole town, the deer trail would fit in that footmark almost. And this is literally the only thing on all sides of our front yard that we will be able to see. I understand that, I understand the people needing, you know, least guaranteed income from out there. I'm just really worried about this one that's so far north that is literally sitting in our front yard.
Thank you very much. Would somebody else like to speak? Please come forward. Your name and address, please.
Sean Kalashov, thirty-seven nineteen South County Road, one twenty-nine Bennett. That's my wife, Yvette. Um, yeah, we moved out there about ten years ago now, I think it is, because I'm disabled and I can give medical records, talk to my doctors all you want. I don't live in a library. I have to live in my house and I hear everything that goes on everywhere because of my head, what's going on with my head. And fifty-eight decibels doesn't sound like a lot. It's a lot to me. It's a hell of a lot. I mean, I don't sleep as it is now. I hear everything. And, I mean, solar's fine and all, but it's still not a proven technology. The cost, I personally don't think that the cost is there for what they're saying. I mean, I don't, I really don't. And if this is going to have a twenty, twenty-six million impact or whatever, my wife told me not to say this, but then they can buy our front yards from all of us and we can move for less than that, I suppose. So that's all I got to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to come forward? Last chance. Okay, seeing none, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to Planning Commission for... Oh, did you want to respond to the comments? Questions?
Yeah, I was taking notes on some of the questions, so I just wanted to respond a few of them. And thank you everyone for being here and for speaking tonight, I appreciate it. As I mentioned, one of the things, we really do want to make sure we're working with all of, all the neighbors to address these, address the concerns. So I just wanted to go through some of the questions and then my colleague, who is our Director of Public Affairs is here and he can better answer a couple of the questions as well. So to go to Mr. Berenberg's question about wildlife was the first one, about CPW concerns. We have had a lot of conversations with Colorado Parks and Wildlife. In fact, they have given us a full, I think it's almost a five-page letter of some of the things that they want us to look out for, for this, this specific site. Of course, one of them is the fence height, wanting to make sure that we're doing as, for burrowing, making sure that we don't have any issues to, during construction. So there is a full list of what Colorado Parks and Wildlife would like us to do during construction. But they, they did not, in the letter, it does not say we object, there are no objections, objections, there are recommendations, what they would like us to be able to, like us to do during construction and require us to do, quite honestly. And that's going to be in our construction plan. It's not, it's not a request, it's a requirement. The fence, National Electric Code does require us to fence the area, so the animals will not be able to go in. The nice thing is it's not five-hundred acres, complete one block with regard to wildlife and the setbacks are all a hundred feet off of right-of-way minimum and then fifty feet off of property lines minimum. So there will be, at least there will be a little bit of room. I'm certainly not claiming there will be any wildlife corridor out there, but there will be, the, each kind of area is going to be fenced on its own. One of the other concerns was mineral rights. We think that solar development is compatible with mineral development. We're, like I say, we're working with ConocoPhillips. Hopefully we'll be able to sit down and get a, do a surface use agreement or, you know, whatever it is we need to do there. I know on a couple of the other sites, we're working with reaching out to mineral owners and making sure that we get surface use agreements in place wherever we need to, whether it's, this is the area that people, that people can drill from, this is the area we're putting solar and making sure we're sitting down with those mineral folks, the mineral development folks to know what areas work for them and what areas don't. Of course, they can't be in riparian areas and wetlands either. Bankruptcy concern, I know that Mr. Hyatt also spoke to this a little bit. Hunter Solar LLC, and I'll get to the question about why it's not on the internet. They, it will be receiving funds from I R E A and so there is a dedicated source of revenue for the life of the project, for that, for that twenty years' life of the project. I have not spoken with the Farm Agency, so that, I wrote that down to reach out to them. To get to Arnold Hollingsworth, Mr. Hollingsworth's question of water usage, there will be no water usage on this, for this project. The solar requires no water. For dust abatement during construction, water trucks will be contracted and brought in from wherever their home base is. They'll be getting water from wherever they have permits to get water and bring that water in. Otherwise, there's no use for, no need for water. To Jackie Dieter's questions, we, I do have, and I'm sorry I don't have them ready for tonight, I was hoping to have them ready, but I've also received those photos from her and sent them off to our visual rendering company to get some idea of what her views might look like and certainly want to talk with them about what we can do to mitigate whether we can perhaps talk about a further setback from the north. Trees are a tough one out there. We've talked about, I don't know that trees are going to grow or going to make it, but you know, once we have some of those renderings in place, we can have a little bit more informed conversation. To get to Mr. Labs' questions, I think I got, yeah. So with I R E A and his concern about not having a contract, that is one of the things, one of the reasons we're here before you today is because in order to sign that PPA, we have the Power Purchase Agreement, which is what PPA stands for, ready to go. We have all the things we need. I R E A has a checklist of things you need and one of those checklists is making sure that we have land use approval. So that PPA is ready to go, but we do want to make sure we have land use approval before entering into that contract. And Hunter Solar LLC is its own special purpose entity. It's not a, a marketing, it's in place simply to manage this project, so it's not going to have a website. It doesn't have a marketing plan or an outreach plan or anything like that. I'm going to come back to investor, I'm going to ask Jason or if you'd like to speak to the investor question. This is for HBS. As well as the thirty percent tax credit. But a couple of other things that Mr. Labs mentioned was Cypress Creek being based in Georgia. We are actually a niche, a US-based company. We have headquarters in Santa Monica. We have offices in Durham, North Carolina, Bend, Oregon, quite a few areas around the country. And then the RECs, he mentioned that renewable energy credits would be for sale on the market. In this particular situation, when I R E A buys the kilowatt-hours, they retire the RECs, the renewable energy certificates. So these would not come with renewable energy credits that would be for sale on the market. They're retired as soon as they're produced per our agreement with I R E A.
Tax credits, not energy credits?
Yeah, and then if I, if I can have Jason speak to tax credit and our investor, anything else, that'd be great. Thank you.
Good evening, for the record, my name is Jason Carr. I'm the Community Relations Director for Cypress Creek Renewable. For the record, I'll give my address, which is fourteen forty-one Northeast Hudson Road, Pineville, Oregon, nine seven seven five four. So on the investment question with the Singapore company, that's an investment company, a global investment company that's been around since nineteen seventy-four and they have head, several headquarters offices here in the United States. They invest in all sorts of companies across the globe. This is an investment company that's just like any other investment company that you see here in the United States. Part of the reason why they are involved in it is because up until recently, most solar development that has been occurring around the world has been happening in Asia and in Europe. So it just makes sense that a company like that would invest in a growing company like ours that is developing renewable energy. It's also important to understand that a huge portion of our investment and the money that, the capital and the money that we raise in order to invest in solar energy and build these companies, or build these projects, excuse me, comes from right here in the United States. Banks like US Bank, insurance companies, private investors, tax equity investors, most of what we raise in capital comes from right here in the United States. Terms of the investment tax credits, they are a renewable energy tax credit and I just want to make a couple of important points. Number one, last year, when Congress passed its budget last October, it had bipartisan support, both from Republicans and Democrats for this. And in fact, in the tax bill that is currently going through Congress, these tax credits are maintained in that bill, again, with both bipartisan support. One of the things that is important to understand about investment tax credits and how they are utilized is that in a new or burgeoning industry like solar, which because it is fairly new and doesn't have assets that have been operating for twenty or thirty years, like Hunter Solar in the United States, there can be uneasiness in the market for investors. And so this is one tool that the federal government has used in other industries, healthcare, education, other private businesses to basically create some certainty within, in the market. This is a one-time tax credit that is used at the beginning of a project and it's not reoccurring and the current provisions have it sunsetting by two thousand twenty-one. And at that point, Congress would have to vote again to make that available. The other questions around the tax or finance questions that I can answer for you?
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
One other, I realized, I didn't respond to Mr. and Mrs. Kalashov, I apologize, about the noise. I wanted to, I have a slide that shows the noise. So the nice thing about solar is we can be flexible with where we put the equipment pads and we would not want to put an equipment pad up near properties. We would want it to be down south off of Quincy, near our access road. Once you get a hundred and fifty feet away from them, there is absolutely no sound whatsoever. So we would not be putting the equipment pad anywhere near the north end of this project. It would be off of Quincy by our access road. I think that was it. One of the questions was about the costs and I R E A customers paying for this. I R E A is required to pay avoided costs. So all they're paying for the kilowatt-hours they're buying from this facility is what they're avoiding paying by not buying them from another facility or Excel or, or something else. So they're not paying an increase for solar specifically. I think I got all of them. If I didn't, please let me know or if there's additional questions, happy to attempt to have.
Thank you. I guess now we'll bring it back to Planning Commission. Any discretion and comment?
I'd like to see the houses, these people's houses up on your map of pills.
Okay, so we're going all the way north up here and you've got, took one of those cleaners. Oh, you need my heater. Oh, the house is right there. Kalashov, Dieter, you like grass?
On the very top, top of the project.
Hollowing me.
Where is the by area of solar impact? About where?
I'm sorry, go on.
Is it next below solar or area?
Yeah. Here, this might. This might help. You can actually sort of see the houses in this one, with the Google Earth image. You can kind of see the homes in the very north part, north of the panels. Does that help? Can you point out the homes on that one? So I think, is that Labs? Is right there. Kalashov?
Yes.
And Dieter.
Right on your solar panels. It's more fun to watch you jump.
Our driveways and our houses, aren't you, are right there at that fence?
That's a driveway there.
What is the distance between their homes and your solar?
We are a fifty-foot setback from the property, so the fence is a minimum of fifty feet from the property line. I'm not sure how far they are off the property line, if they also have a fifty-foot. I don't, I don't know that, I don't think so. Yeah, on the property line. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Did you have further questions? No, thank you.
So, Mr. Richards, yes?
These homes.
Oh, these homes, one, two, three.
It looks like your view of the mountains is not encumbered by the solar in section five. Right, but, but you, you, you have a complete view to the west, correct?
Excuse me, we're trying to record this and this is the official record of the meeting, so anyone who's going to answer questions or speak needs to come to the podium, please.
So, yes, the mountains are to the west, but Pike's Peak is directly to the south, just barely west of us. And our four-foot fences, I should have printed pictures like Jackie did, our four-foot fences are right where it is. When you get above four-foot, you lose the view of it. And like we were saying before, their house is eighty-foot from the property line, their front door. Ours is forty-five. The front door.
From the property line.
From the property line where those solar panels are setting. Where you see those solar panels? Our front door is forty-five foot, theirs is eighty foot back. Our driveways are both about six to eight foot, depending on which driveway from those panels.
Forty-five and eighty to the fence. Is that right?
Yeah, so our, our front door would only be forty-five foot behind those panels if they're right at the fence line. And they're saying they'll be fifty foot in the fence.
Yeah. All right, Neil, I'm completely confused. I thought, I heard you say that the panels were fifty feet from a property line, but now I hear you say, no, they're going to be forty-five feet from our front door.
No, from our fence line and then they're saying they're fifty foot in from that fence line.
Okay, so you're forty-five feet, you're ninety-five feet total.
Yes.
So forty-five feet to your property line and then fifty feet from your property line to where the panels begin.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from the planning members? Mr. Rosenberg?
We have voted on quite a few solar projects, pretty much, I think, all along Quincy. And I think in every case, we have voted unanimously on them. I know in some of those cases, on smaller properties, we were asking, why don't you build a bigger one? I remember us having that discussion, you know, why is someone building a two-megawatt? Why aren't they building a bigger and getting more utilization and more power to the power company? It took I R E A a long time to come around to doing renewable energy. Everyone else was already doing it and I R E A was opposed to it. Little by little, I R E A figured out they could do it as cheap as they would do coal. We all know coal, or maybe we don't all know, but many of us believe coal is not a good... a good thing for our environment. And solar is, to me, uh, it, the impacts are minimal for what we can get from it. And I know somebody's made a comment that, uh, we know we're gonna need more power. I mean, that's just the way it is. We're growing. Colorado's growing much more than anywhere else in the country. So I think this is great that we're heading this direction, and, and I'm kinda like, well, finally.
Well, I, I would like just make a comment that I read the comments from Julio, looking long-range planning view of this, and that the county commissioners are gonna be having a meeting in early January. My concern, I'm not opposed to solar, but the cumulative effect of all of these farms long-term, I'm not, I, I don't feel comfortable that I have a grasp of what it really, really means. Um, you're taking ag land out for possibly 40 years. What, what does that mean? Are there other costs that we haven't even considered? Um, I looked at Adams County. They have had solar farms approved, and we'd never take those into, what does it mean altogether? And I guess I feel in early January that might be looked at, and I'm just not sure. Approving a big one, I'm not comfortable with.
I'd like to make a comment on that as well. I think, um, you know, and I read, you know, long-range planning comments as well, and I think until we get a guidance from the county commissioners, we need to consider these as each individual cases upon their own merits. I also think, while I understand the idea, you know, we have careful taking farmland offline, um, you know, I know that out on the eastern plains, they are requiring or encouraging, you know, property owners to take their farmland offline because of the long-term effects on the Okalala aquifer, and that it's not being replenished. So I do think, you know, that maybe some of these things are kind of beyond some of the facts we're considering now. I do believe that, you know, we're in a growing, thriving natural area, and this is a clean, you know, alternative to other ways we're producing energy. Um, and I also, you know, I understand the government trying to incent it to get it past the petroleum interests, to get it out the front. So I do hope we all take that into consideration and dig forward as we look at this.
Any comment?
Um, I lost it on when the commissioners would probably be meeting to discuss the future of the ag.
I thought it was January 8th.
January 8th. So when we, they were still after January 8th, what, what are they gonna say?
In my opinion, we were not appointed to wait on what the commissioners have to say. We were appointed to make recommendations, and then the commissioners go from there. Um, I think we think this is a good idea, and we should tell them it's a good idea. Um, what they come up with in the future, if they do something different, I mean, in the beginning, we were approving all the oil and gas wells, and then they set a memorandum of understanding with the oil companies, and we haven't been involved anymore. Uh, maybe they'll come up with something like that. But we have a project in front of us, and I think it's our obligation to make the decision one way or the other.
Any other comments from the planning commission? Does anybody want to make an action?
I will make a motion, and we'll see where it goes. Um, in the case of U-17 dash 005, Hunter Solar Use by Special Review, I have reviewed the staff report, including all exhibits and attachments, and have listened to the applicant's presentation and the public comment as presented at the hearing, and hereby move to recommend approval of this application based on the findings supporting approval in the staff report. Subject to the following conditions: The applicant makes any modifications to plans as requested by the Public Works and Development Department prior to the signing of the milars and before any construction is started on the project. The applicant, this is two, the applicant shall address all engineering services, division comments, and concerns, including but not limited to G E S C, R O W, and street cut permits, a gravel roadway agreement, or as identified in their reports prior to the start of construction. Three, the applicant shall address all comments and requirements of the Bennett Fire Protection District. Four, the applicant shall provide for the removal of the solar power plant if and when the solar power plant has been abandoned and is no longer functional or operational for a period of more than one year through the use of a performance bond to Rappahoe County to be provided by the applicant before the project becomes operational or through some other guarantee of removal of the equipment. Five, the applicant shall work with mineral interest owners to develop a surface use agreement to allow access to their minerals.
Miss Steffany? You have a second? Any other comments? Okay. I think she have a voice vote on this.
Local.
Local.
Ms. Lassens?
Yes.
Ms. Chapin? Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Saul?
Yes.
Mr. Rader?
No.
Mr. Grummel?
Yes.
Mr.?
No.
So I have, um, Commissioner Chapin, Commissioner Rick, and Commissioner Rader as opposed to the motion. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
So the motion passes on a four to three vote.
Okay. Thank you.
So, sorry, I just violated my own rule. Didn't walk up to the microphone, so probably no one heard me. Um, so on that vote, it was a four to three vote. So four members voted in favor of the motion to recommend approval. Three members voted in opposition to recommend, um, approval. So this recommendation goes forward as approval on the basis of the findings in the staff report and with the commission, the, uh, conditions of approval recommended by staff. And this does require public hearing with the Board of County Commissioners. So anyone who is here this evening and would like another opportunity to speak on this is very welcome to come to the hearing of the Board of County Commissioners. And, um, if that does not work for someone, we're happy to take written comments as well, and we can put those into the staff report that goes onto the county, uh, commissioners. And, um, Jason, do we have a date yet for the board? There's Diane. I'm sorry.
February 6th.
So the date is, uh, for the Board of County Commissioners hearing is February 6th, which is a Tuesday morning. It's at 9:30. That is at the County Administration Building in Littleton. But I would just like to note that all hearing dates are tentative until they have been noticed. So there's always a possibility that that date could change, um, before we get it noticed. So we do recommend that you check back with staff or on our website to make sure of that hearing date. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I, this, could I add something here?
Sure.
I, I am a very pro-solar individual, but I'm troubled that there wasn't, you know, any sort of, of landscaping option, or trees, or resolution of the fences for these people who have lived on their property for a long time, who are out there because they want to be in that part of the county. And I think with a project this size, I think some trees, or some landscaping, or some kind of fencing is very small a price to pay to get along with your neighbors. So that's, that's my primary reason for voting no tonight, is because these people, this affects the way they see the world, so.
Thank you. Any other comment?
Yes, I, I also completely, our, our for solar energy, and there's no problem with that, wind energy, but solar, yes. But these are three families. Before you came, before they even thought about leasing their land instead of wheat to solar. So I'm concerned with those three families, and I'm concerned that you're quite close to them. And some of the questions I had in my mind that we didn't have time to discuss is, what would happen if you moved the sewer farther south by 500 feet? Would that let them see, uh?
Absolutely.
Would that let them see Pike's Peak better? I don't know.
Yes.
And those are some of the renderings that were.
Go ahead.
Those are some of the renderings we'd like to do. Unfortunately, between the time that we were able to send the letter, um, there's only 30 days and 31 days in advance and then get information back. But yes, those are absolutely things we absolutely want to continue to work with, um, these neighbors and make sure. We need to do the renderings and see if we, if we move it 500 feet, is that enough?
Well, if you stood out there 500 feet away, they could stand on their porch and they could see where they could.
That's why we want to do the renderings at, you know, where it is now, where it is 500 feet, that kind of thing.
Could you move it away far enough that they would be satisfied and you could, we'd all be satisfied? That was my, my big, big question. That's why I voted no.
Okay, all, all the no votes were for the same reason. The neighbors are important. Maybe by the next hearing, something can change. Okay. I think that's the end of the solar one. Thank you very much. We'll bring that to a conclusion, and our next item is case number L-17009, the Cherry Creek School District Innovation Center. Location and extent.
That's right. Exactly. Exactly.
It's, uh, my, I don't know, too, you're, you're, I'm, 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 We will call the applicant forward to make a presentation and you state your name and address.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. My name is Miraj Peir. I live at 5500 DTC Parkway Apartment 515, Greenwood Village, Colorado, 80111. And thank you for the opportunity to present here on this exciting project that we have been working on for several months now. I have a quick agenda that I'd like to go through. I want to share with you what the project vision is that the district is envisioning for this project, the career pathways that the district plans to incorporate into this building. I briefly touched on the site plan as far as building design and I'm going to wrap it up with an exterior animation. Back in November of 2016, the Cherry Creek community as part of a bond approved, amongst other things, a career and technical educational facility. As part of this facility, the district had a, had a very strong vision on preparing students for the future. Students and learners today have multiple avenues to evolve into entrepreneurs and professionals in the future. So this, this project really envisions allowing the opportunity for the students to have that experience as well as getting prepared, hence the term preparing for 2021. The district also wants to have industry link into, to the building so that students have industry experience as they are evolving through these avenues. Cherry Creek School District has always had a strong tradition of getting students career-ready in college, preparing college for further college. And as part of this, they're also envisioning it to be a career-ready facility where they have exposure to career avenues down the road. The district is also looking at this as really a community partnership for the building. The targeted students for this facility will be mainly juniors and seniors, but they're also looking at neighboring school, school districts and partnering with them and they plan to help those district students to come to this facility as well as part of being truly a community partnership for, for, as part of this building. Even prior to us getting involved in this project, the district had done a fair amount of work in identifying what career pathways they were going to pursue as part of this building. They've identified seven career pathways and I won't go into each one of them, but they're listed. So these are the career pathways that will be incorporated into the building. The selection of the site, as Jason mentioned, is part of the Dove Valley Business Park. And this site really captures the, the vision for the project as well. It's centrally located, easily accessible from all the freeways. But more importantly, it's also centrally located from some of the industry partners that the district is hoping to partner with. Micron is, is one that's very close to the facility along with Digicom. So the, the district really envisions this facility being part and industry people coming to the facility and helping students, help them towards their futures. So as you can see, the district has a very strong vision for the project. So when we were brought on board, we were really challenged to, to design a facility not only that captured that, but also responded to the site features. The site, as you can see, is located between Broncos Parkway and Chambers Road. And it's a challenging site. There's a flood plain located on the east side and also the, the side slopes from south to north pretty steeply. And it also has a cross slope from east to west. So it's a pretty challenging site in that regard. As, as part of the design for this facility, there were high, high-volume spaces which were the aviation and automotive. So we took advantage of the site topography and, and located some of the higher-volume spaces as well so that the height is reduced. So they are located on the east side. The west side really became a one-story building. Jason mentioned that Arapaho Rexon Parks are located here on the west side. And the student parking lot is really envisioned as being used after hours for people who visit that park. So again, connecting back to that whole community partnership that the district is really envisioning for this facility. The staff parking is located on, on the south side and the main bus drop-off is associated with the staff parking lot.
Would you mind backing up one slide for just a moment?
Yeah.
So where are the soccer fields?
Uh, this is the site. So this is looking towards the west. So the soccer fields are located to the west of the site. So I will be able to.
I was trying to place where, is the green there where the soccer fields on the slide?
Right, the Dove Valley Regional Park, right.
And then the orange is this side?
The orange is this side and this has also been bought by the Arapaho Rexon Park. So that's also going to be a future park. So that's what I mentioned is that parking lot that's located to the west side is also going to be a shared parking lot after hours.
Thank you.
So I'll quickly touch base on the floor plan. I talked about how the building volume sets itself with the site topography. So we had a pretty strong reasoning session with the district over three days. And, and the takeaway from that was the building's floor comes out to the simple linear diagram and the roof forms complemented that, that site topography. So as I mentioned, the taller base spaces are tucked into the topography so the volume is not as evident as you come from the road. And it sets itself up to be the main entrance to be on the west side. And you can see on the, on the previous side there was entrance plaza located on the west side. So you have a completely different experience when you come up from Broncos Parkway and when you come up from Chambers Road. So if you come up from Broncos Parkway, the, the building itself is located in the southwest corner. So it's a destination. So it sits up on the hill. And you'll see that in some of, in the renderings and the 3D images that I have at the end of this presentation. But on Chambers Road, it sets itself as a mass with the backdrop of the Rocky Mountains behind it. So this is the main level plan. As you come in on the west side, the admin wing, we have all the seat, the pathways that I had delineated previously. So you have automotive, aviation, and then infrastructure, which is the building trades located at the lower level. This is the lower level floor plan. You can see again the big base spaces are located at the lower level to reduce volume. But you can see the floor of the buildings themselves to not. So as you come in at the upper level, you have a visual for the entire building. So that really was an, a vision for this project by the district where the students would experience all the pathways as they walk through the building. I'll walk you through the three-dimensional elevations and renderings and then at the end I'll wrap it up with a, with a walkthrough. This is looking from, looking from the north side as you come up Broncos Parkway. You can see the auto yard is located here. This is the automotive bay and there's a big screen wall of the requirements from Dove Valley that we have designed. This is the main entrance into the building on the west side. This is the plaza with, with the building signage. One thing I do want to add is it's been called Innovation, Career and Innovation Academy. That's not the official name just yet. It's been something the district has been using and the official name will probably come in February. And as I work my way through to the south side, you can see the fairly steep grade drop-off and how the building forms complement that topography of the site. Again, the main entrance looking from, from the south. The, the east side of the building is really where the services are located. And you can see this is the infrastructure bay. The mechanical yard is screened. There's an exterior patio located on, on the east side as well. And some service parking located back here along with the material storage area associated with the infrastructure bay. This is the automotive yard which is screened in along with the aviation on the background. This is the east side service road as it loops back out and connects back into the private driveway. Do you guys have any questions before I start the animation? So the animation brings you in from the north side. As you come through from Broncos Parkway, you can see the buildings, building slowly reveals itself. So it's really that destination as you walk up to it. You can see the aviation on, on your left-hand side, the screen wall. And I'm looping across on the west side. The main student parking lot is located here. And you work your way towards the main entrance. And you can see the roof forms complementing the topography of the site. And as you turn and head towards the south side, this is where the health and wellness wing is. The bus drop-off located on the south side along with, with the teacher parking. The infrastructure bay is located. The building exterior really consists of really two materials. And there's a material board here as well that you're happy to share that and bring it over to you guys. It's concrete mistletoe along with metal panel. Those are basically the simple building materials. Present a strong form. So the, the color represents the district, the red color. That, I'll open it up for questions.
Other questions? Do you have a question? How many students is this facility intended to serve?
So right now, it's been planned for, there'll be two sessions is how the district is approaching this. There's a morning session and an afternoon. Each session is going to cater to 500 students.
Thank you.
Pickens Tech does some of these same things. And I thought Cherry Creek and Aurora Schools together operated Pickens Tech. Is Cherry Creek not doing that anymore?
Good evening. David Henderson, Director of Facilities for Cherry Creek Schools, 2457 South Argonne Street, Aurora. The Pickens Tech program is primarily an Aurora Schools program. They offer it to out-of-district students. This is, this study is really an opportunity to create our own vision and our own unique programming there that Pickens may not offer. Also serve districts that are adjacent to us on the south and west side should they choose to sync it there.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Is there anybody from the open public hearing? There was a signing sheet, but it seems to have disappeared. So I don't know if anybody wishes to come forward and speak on this proposal. Is there anybody? Then I guess we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the planning commission for questions, comments, considerations. No questions? Then I guess we can move forward.
I'd like to make a motion.
Very good. Proceed.
In the case of L17-009, Cherry Creek School District Career and Innovation Academy, location and extent, the planning commissioners have reviewed the staff report, including all exhibits and attachments, and have listened to the applicant's presentation and the public comment as presented at the public hearing. I have removed to approve this application based on the findings in the staff report, subject to the following conditions. One, prior to signature of the final copy of these plans, the applicant must address public work staff comments and concerns. Two, the applicant shall meet all Centennial Airport's conditions. Three, the applicant shall comply with all South Metro Fire Rescue District's requirements. Four, the applicant shall comply with Tri-County Health Department's pollution prevention practices. Five, the applicant shall comply with Dove Valley Business Park Architectural Review Committee requests. Six, the applicant shall comply with Repo County Water and Wastewater Authority's requirements. Seven, prior to signature of the final copy of these plans, the applicant shall develop a noxious weed management plan for the site. Eight, if site activities, grading, et cetera, do not commence before March 15th, the applicant shall conduct the surveys identified by the Colorado Parks and Wildlife for the burrowing owl and raptors. Nine, the applicant shall submit a letter of approval from the Architectural Review Committee approving the 12417 plan set. And 10, the applicant shall meet all county or Dove Valley master development plan parking, signage, and height requirements.
Do you have a second for the motion?
All second.
Very good. You have a second? Are those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion parrot, she animates. Thank you.
Really?
They didn't find the guy, but they had some guy on the ground.
Find the Z in?
The Z.
All the more reason for us to start it.
Yeah, that's great.
Get the place locked down and get rolling.
Yep, that was tonight about, or last night about, sorry, last night about five thirty towards the end.
Closest to missing.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know if the end unit or not, I looked down and there was a whole bunch of these cars.
Okay, I think we're ready for item number four, which is case number P16-019, Xenia Street, Townhomes FDP. And Mr. Skinner will present for the county. Mr. Skinner.
Okay, commissioners. Bill Skinner for the county's planning division. P16-019 is a proposal for, well, let me start at the beginning. So jurisdiction, the property's been posted for more than two weeks. Letters have gone to the adjacent property owners. Signs have been up. Verification of that's been provided to the staff. The site's located at 8850 East Mississippi Avenue in the four score mile area. It's on the southwest corner, the intersection of East Mississippi Avenue and South Vidius Xenia Street, excuse me. The P16-019 Final Development Plan application proposes construction of 28 residential units in seven buildings, four units per building on a 1.43 acre site. The gross, gross density would be 18.9 DU per acres and a net density of 19.6 DU per acre. If the planning commission remembers, we heard a preliminary development plan for this not too far back. At that hearing, we heard from quite a few people from, it was called Cinnamon, now believed it's Yosemite Village. And that is the multifamily, two-story tall development community immediately east of this. I was somewhat surprised that despite notice and attempts to reach out, including attempts to reach out to one specific individual who spoke the most last time, they didn't hear anything back. You'll also notice in the external referrals to the external agencies that I reached back from this final development case to the preliminary development case for quite a lot of the comments from the agencies because we didn't hear from a number of those agencies. So much so that I started to wonder if I had made a mistake with the notice. We double-checked that. And it turned out they were comfortable with their position in the preliminary development plan and they trusted that staff would just bring that forward into the final development plan. A lot of that trust, we're doing that. Let's say the underlying PDP was approved by the board, May 3rd of 2016. The staff has found that this final development plan application complies with the approved PDP, including conditions that were put in place at that time. PDP, including conditions that were put in place at that time. Specifically, one additional condition that the Board added after we moved on to the Board, that the southern setback be increased to 30 feet. And the eastern setback up against Yosemite Village be increased from 10 to 15 feet. We'll work through that and make sure that's complied with in the final development plan. The staff recommendation for it is, given that it complies with the county final development rec, but final development plan recommend, or having problems tonight, folks. Regulations, it complies with direction given in the four square mile area sub-area report. Staff recommendation for this is a recommendation of approval. Now, of course, like Commissioner Rosenberg mentioned earlier, planning commissions' role is provide their own recommendation and we'll move forward to the Board. We haven't set that Board hearing yet. And I think that's all I've got for the quick run-through. Any questions for me before we move on to the applicant's presentation?
I guess none.
Yeah, no, point of order for you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to point out that, you know, as my husband and I have a building company, we both, Alpert Homes, various groups within Alpert Homes, we both are on the approved builder list in Lowry for Boulevard 1, but we don't have any combined concerns and I don't think it'll impact my ability to judge this case.
Very good, thank you.
I was just gonna say, the part of my work for is architectural, but I wasn't involved and don't financially have any interest in the company. And I have nothing to do with it.
I have a question.
Please.
So you just mentioned that we approved this back in May.
Of 2016.
Of 2016, right. And then it went to the Board of County Commissioners. And they said increase the southern setback from 25 to 30 feet when the county commissioners approved it, but yet that hasn't been done in the FDP. It's here as a condition of approval. So why wasn't this done in the FDP?
That is a fair question. Staff's been working with the applicant's engineer. I think we've got a miscommunication just on getting that documented on the plans. I believe that is already there. We're down to just draw the arrows and show me the number and commit to it on the plan. And I've talked to Scott Alpert about it and he thinks they've already got it. We just need to document.
So we already have it on the drawings in the plan?
Not to my recollection, no.
Okay, so we really don't have it.
I believe.
You just said we did.
I believe we do. When I scaled that drawing myself, I don't think that's 25 feet. I think it's mislabeled. Now, I do understand that we have to go on what's provided.
But the setback on here.
Oh, I see what we're talking about. The ta, I see what, Chris Schipper, are you talking about the drawing or the table?
No, I'm just understanding, I'm trying to understand. You said that they met the county commissioners, you know, that the county commissioner said this on the preliminary development plan and that you followed this process all the way through and it was done, but yet here I see it again as a condition of approval for the final plan.
Fair enough. And Commissioner Saul noticed it's not noted as 30 in the table. That is a mistake that we're fixing. The condition is the county's safety belt that guarantees we get it fixed.
Okay, so, but that drawing is 30 feet or 25 feet?
It's my understanding, the actual drawing properly scaled is 30 feet. There was an earlier dimension that I have had the applicant remove that showed it at 25. I think that was an error. We removed the incorrect dimension, but I have not got the correct dimension put in place yet.
Okay, I was just trying to understand if we've been doing this since 2016, why it's still on the list.
So this chart is incorrect.
That chart is incorrect as it stands now. We will have a corrected set of drawings before we get to the Board. And Mr. Schipper, please, that's a good question and well asked. Thank you for that.
Just a question, just a point of clarification, but there's a commitment to do it. There's not any kind of pushback on the part of the developer saying they aren't going to honor that.
That is correct.
And they would have to if we approved it with the condition because they couldn't do it otherwise.
There is the extremely unlikely chance that the Board can remove a condition imposed by the planning commission. I mean, it is within the realm of possibility. I don't see it as a very realistic situation.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Skinner.
Okay.
We will ask the applicant to come forward and make their presentation.
Hello. Evening. My name is Scott Alpert. My address is 1201 South Parker Road, Suite 200, Denver, Colorado, 80231. I'm the president of Alpert Development, which is proposing this project called Xenia Townhomes. We've actually, we purchased this property in 2015 and we're working on it even in 2014. It's a challenging site that it's 600 feet wide and only 105 feet deep. And we spent a lot of time working on the product and what we could put in there and what would be viable for the neighborhood and compatible with what's around it. We are near the Breakers Project. There to our, to our north. There's a low-income housing project to our west, some single-family homes to our south, and some condominiums to our east. And we are on a cul-de-sac road and we are planning on doing seven four-unit buildings for a total of 28 units. We had 32 units prior and we decided for logistic reasons to only go with, and for parking reasons, which would get more parking, more green space, and a nicer project by going with seven buildings instead of eight. And so now we have 28 units instead of 32. You've probably seen this part of the presentation several times, I'll try and go quickly. This is a project that we did in the past called Village Court, which is about three blocks away from Xenia. And it was, been a real successful project. This is Oak Park, which is probably two miles from the project in Rappahoe County as well. That's near the Denver Dome Friends League. And that project was built in 2007. This is Vintage, which is just about half a mile, a mile from here, just near Havana and Kayleigh. And it's in, just north of, yeah, just north of some of the car dealerships that are nearby here. This is an older project, Sundance Hills. This is now Greenwood Village, it was Rappahoe County. And that's near Dayton and Powers. And this is Rappahoe Lake, this is in between Vintage and Sundance Hills. This project was large enough that it was able to have a man-made lake put on it. Tonight's project is not near enough to have that kind of a, an amenity that fortunately we'll have green belts. This is what the project currently looks like on Xenia. There's some old homes that are in desperate need of repair. We've been band-aiding them since we bought the project. They were built in the 1940s and we bought the property from Match Buff. He's a school or a church and they were planning on doing a building there, but it never came to fruition for them. This is the corner of Xenia, Mississippi, and there's an old house on there. And I was just informed by one of our neighbors that it was, the DEA just came and broke into it tonight with one of the tenants that was in there. I hope everything's okay. We're looking forward to tearing all this down and putting something new and fresh in. This is a couple of the cars and basically junk that's on the property now. This is our site plan for the new project, showing the seven buildings in white. And the hashed marks are the driveways that give to the garages of the properties. Each of the property, each one of them in the front has a green belt, which is signified in green. And since 2016, we've widened the green belts. We made our setback from, we went from 10 feet to 15 feet on the east side. Now that's depicted. And then we went from, originally I think we had only 10 or 15 feet between our neighbor to the south of us. And now we're going to 30 feet. And I'm publicly stating we're green to 30 feet. And I don't know how it got depicted as 25 or if it's been fixed or not, but we will fix it and we will do 30 feet. We also are going to landscape our detention pond and the green areas. And we're going to put up a wall along the Mississippi. And we're going to dedicate the right-of-way to widen Mississippi alongside of our frontage of our project. Our homes are going to be 1,200 to 1,800 square feet approximately. They're going to be two and three bedroom and all of them are going to have two car garages. And then there's, there's going to be parking for guests also on our property that faces towards the, in between the green belts areas. I believe there's nine, eight or nine spots for guests. And then we'll also have parking along Xenia. We're widening Xenia also to help accommodate that. This is an example of a green belt that is much smaller than ours that's on a K&amp;B project. And it kind of gives an idea of how they look when you're in between the buildings. They have a sidewalk down the middle and then sidewalks to each of the individual homes. This is a green belt that we did on our Valencia project. Instead of just having a big crater with a hole there like we've seen in some places, we decided to landscape it and make it more of an amenity and more attractive. And actually, the children kind of like it. They can, they can snowboard down the hills a little bit, sled down the hills, excuse me, snowboard down the mountains. Like you could snowboard, but it wouldn't be so great. This is the black and white drawings of the buildings that we're going to put on the property. On the end units, they're going to be the larger 1,800 approximate feet, 16 to 1,800 square feet. And then the middle units are 1,200. And they're two bedroom units and then the end units are three bedroom units. And like I said, they each have two car garages. And the middle units have two car, but they're tandem, so one car's in front of the other. That's why it looks like a one car. Another picture of just like the trucks and junk that's on the property. That's our neighboring property. There's setbacks or actually maybe a little bit smaller than ours, but we decided to make ours wider and that made them happy, I think, because they didn't show up for this. That's some of the neighboring property. This is aerial view of the property. And that's approximately. Any questions that I can answer?
So what building materials do you intend to use?
We're going to use brick and siding and stucco and siding. And maybe a mixture, we haven't quite formalized it yet, but it's on the drawings right now is brick and siding.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? Was, was this the property where one part of it is three feet higher than the other part and people were debating over where the property line was and if it had been built up or not?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I just wondered. I was just, something was ringing in the bell.
This is that project, but it's the neighbors that are three feet up as opposed to this site. Yeah, they said higher than we do.
Are you going to have sidewalks adjacent to Mississippi on that one slide? It looks like there's nothing there now.
Yeah, I believe the county is going to have us dedicate the right-of-way and then at some later point, they'll have us pay for it. Then the county will put it in at a later date, I think is the plan right now. And so they'll have room for, to widen it and put a sidewalk in.
Okay, so there would be room for a detached sidewalk?
It should be, yeah. I mean, I don't know exactly what the county plans are, but that's the way it is carried through the rest of Mississippi to the, to the west.
So if you, oh, sorry. No, sorry. So if you're putting a wall on Mississippi, and that's on the north side of the property, and there is a sidewalk there, then who is responsible for maintaining that sidewalk on the other side of the wall? Because that's a huge problem on these north-facing streets. I know you've seen it down by Smokey Hill High School where no one can walk on that sidewalk because it has a wall and it catches all the snow and it's, who's responsible for that?
We have a project just a couple of blocks away and I don't know who's responsible for it, but we've been taking care of it ourselves.
Right, so you would take care of this yourself?
If I'm required to. The county likes it when we do it, so.
And you have that school right across the street, the Townhouse School is right there in that neighborhood and so I don't know.
The Townhouse School is further to the.
Mississippi, they're at Mississippi and Dayton.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they're another, I don't know, half a mile or a mile away.
Yeah.
The intent is they have sidewalks down both, both sides of Mississippi. The Denver side, there's, it's already in and on the Rappahoe County side. Eventually, when it's finally finished, there's another project right now that the county, I think, would have to condemn some of their front yard in order to continue the sidewalk through. I don't know what the county's plans for that are yet.
Right, okay.
I tried to purchase the property, but they didn't want to sell it, so.
Right.
I tried.
Great, thanks. It's noted that the HOA will maintain the private streets. Does that mean that they will be more narrow than the county?
There are actually driveways into, to the, like an alleyway, if you will, in between the buildings. And then there's just a little bit of Xenia that we need to widen on our side.
So every unit will have a garage?
Correct, yeah.
In tandem or two?
Yeah, the end units are side-by-side two-car and the interior two units are tandem. And so it's two total in each unit.
Are there any other questions? Mr. Skinner?
Just want to pop in real quick. I realize you wouldn't go through these every time because you've seen them hundreds of times, but in the standard notes, one of them that the county puts on various drawings, there's a menu that we have to put on there. One of them is landscape maintenance. And that specifies that someone other than the county, which means the development, is going to handle maintenance of the area between the property line and the paved roadways adjacent to that. So we have assigned that responsibility and that would be part of this approval.
That's covered under landscape maintenance.
Yep, there's a specific note on the front cover.
I'm not sure I agree the landscape maintenance covers snow removal.
That's a fair point.
So, I mean, there are many communities in the county where the snow doesn't get taken care of.
Yeah, and I was thinking in terms of weeds, grasses and so forth.
And that's landscaping.
Right, that's snow removal.
It's just a north side of the street issue that it's, it makes sidewalks impassable when it snows if no one's, and a lot of people don't take care of them developments. Just don't pay attention.
And so, so we could ask if the HOA, we could ask right now if there's an intent for the HOA to have a contractor on-site to plow out those private drives. They're not public, the county won't be doing it. But if there's a plan to have contractors coming and plowing those drives, maybe that contract could extend to the adjacent public sidewalk.
Concern, concerned sidewalk.
Well, maybe we. We could ensure that that same contractor's also handling that snow removal on the adjacent public walks. It's worth, worth asking.
Okay, now it's time to open the public hearing. And we have one person signed up. Farrell Woods, would you like to come forward and state your name and address?
Farrell Woods, 1200 South Xenia. I live immediately south of the property that's getting ready to be developed. Just tonight, one of the people here gave me a set of the plans. It's the first I've seen of an. It's the first I've seen of an actual drawing, and, you know, I've been in construction a little bit, so I've been trying to study them. The, I, I'm glad this is happening, I'm glad this stuff is being scraped there. What that, one of the first houses is actually a chicken coop that's been converted. Three people are living in it. Um, my concern is parking. Um, on the west side of the street, we have subsidized housing now. A lot of those people park on Xenia. I will have to go behind a car, wait a car comes this way, and then go back out. I understand the street's being widened, I don't know how much. On this plan, I counted seven parking spaces, two, one or two of which are handicapped, and, um, the project that Mr. Alpert just did a block west of there, townhomes, there are now fifty cars that park on Willow because of a lack of, evidently a lack of convenient parking on the project just west of there. And, uh, that same thing concerns me on Xenia Street. Um, a lot of, a lot of the garages are designed these days for two subcompact cars. So what everybody does, they put one big car in there, a little bit of junk, and they find somewhere else to put the other car. You can tell there's no pads in front of these, so you have to pull in the alley, go all the way in the garage, or you park out on the street so you don't block everybody. That's the one thing that, that concerns me, and like I said, tonight's the first time I've been able to see a, an accurate plot plan on this thing. And so if they have people come over, there's a few people, several people parking in the street on Willow, they have about fifty people parking on Willow now because of the density of the units and evidently the lack of convenient parking, for whatever reason. I've got a video on my iPad, I took during the day when there's only about thirty cars there. But that's just, I see that same thing that's gonna happen here, and it's problematic. I don't know where the cars are gonna park. That's my one thing.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Alpert, would you like to respond?
Um, yeah, the, the parking has been a challenge on our other project. Um, the, they, the garages are definitely large enough for two cars, two trucks, two SUVs. I mean, for, if you have really big cars, they get tight. That really isn't what the problem is there. The, the problem is a lot of people, I think, don't wanna pay for storage, so they put their stuff in the garage instead of paying for storage, and then they park the car on Willow. Um, we were thinking about having the spring, summer, having like a garage sale or something, so that the people can sell some of the stuff in the garage, and, uh, then put their other car in it, and we think that'll help a lot. There's probably more like, uh, ten to fifteen cars that are parking along there, um, not fifty.
I have a video during the day.
Well, anyway, I mean, I've never actually counted, and fifty sounds a lot. Um, the, uh, the road is wide enough to accommodate parking, and Xenia also is gonna be wide enough, and Xenia also has, uh, the required amount of parking, guest parking spots, as well as, uh, garage spaces for all of the units. So we meet all of the county requirements, and, uh, on Willow, we will try and have a garage sale and see if that helps clean up some of the, uh, the parking there. Um, some people, though, do have three cars, and so we run into that sometimes, or there could be three roommates or something sharing, sharing, and then sometimes they'll, they'll, the extra roommate will park there. Um, but the, the street can accommodate it, so, um, fortunately, I guess that, uh, that's a good thing. There's, um, uh, there's people that are, they're filling up all the places here, and it's good that we've, we're able to help accommodate, uh, the need that's going on around town now with all the growth, and, uh, look forward to participating in it more. Any questions?
Seeing none, I guess we will. Is anybody else on the public that wishes to speak? Seeing none? Mr. Skinner?
I just feel obligated here. I've, I've seen the video on the iPad, and it's, you know, in that video, it's probably up closer to thirty, and...
During the day, not during the evening, everybody's home.
And as it explained to me, that's during work hours, so, you know, maybe fifty cars is possible at night. I'm, just wanted to say I have seen the video.
Okay, thank you. Is there no one else on the public who wishes to speak? We will close the public hearing and bring you back to the planning commission for comments, considerations. Any comments? Does anybody want to make a motion?
Make a motion?
Thank you so much. As a case of P sixteen dash zero nineteen Xenia Street Townhomes, FDP, I have reviewed the staff report, including all exhibits and attachments, and have listened to the applicant's presentation and any public comment as presented at the hearing, and hereby move to recommend approval of this application based on the findings in the staff report, subject to following conditions, one through four, adding condition five, that the developer will make provision for snow removal as appropriate on Mississippi Avenue, bordering the property.
On, on the sidewalk?
On the sidewalk, yes. No, the whole street, no.
Can I suggest that state the HOA will be responsible?
Yes, I'd like to amend that, that the HOA shall be responsible for removal of snow on the sidewalk.
Yeah, I don't wanna do that.
Side Mississippi Avenue.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion, a new number five, and we have a second to the motion?
Yes, I second.
Mr. Rosenberg seconded the motion. Any other comments? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Also do dramatic readings in my spare time, so.
Thank you, everybody.
And that concludes our planning commission meeting. Are there any announcements from the county?
Don't know if Julio told you he's retiring. So January second is his last day. Julio? Julio, are you still here?
He already left.
He escaped, but I could make that announcement.
How long has Julio been with the county?
I think it's been like twenty-six years or something like that. It's, it's... Well, he, he was not here, he has not been here as long as Pammy was here.
Oh.
She was here like thirty-six years or something. But, um, yeah, so January second is his last day. Um, we're hoping that we'll be able to get some transition help with him, from him part-time after that. He's willing to do it if we can get it worked out with the county. Um, Alan and Larry will still be around, at least, you know, for a while, um, working on some things and helping with transition. I think Julio does plan to be here for the hearing for the comp plan on January ninth. Um, but, uh, Alan White will, you know, finish up that project. He's been our primary author on that, although we all work on it as a group. Um, so Alan will be continuing to finish up some things with the comprehensive plan after that hearing. But, um, yeah, just wanted to let you know that. Um, I, moving on to different announcements, um, I haven't had a chance to put together all the, um, hearing dates for two thousand eighteen, but, uh, Terry is going to add the approval of the annual calendar to the first meeting in January, and then she's also going to add, um, the annual, uh, action to approve a posting location for the agendas, which, um, is currently inside our front door. We don't have an outdoor location that's protected, that we can post those. But, um, that is something that's required to be approved every year, so that will also be on the first meeting in January. We're looking for a different date for the dinner. We got a little concerned about trying to fit that in with a public hearing on the comp plan. I've gotten a little bit of feedback on some alternate dates that might be tricky to work around, so we're still working on that date.
Is that January nineteenth meeting here?
January ninth.
Ninth, I mean.
Uh, yes, that is here.
And that is the public hearing?
That is the public hearing for the comprehensive plans, so.
I believe I read somewhere that in one of the public notices, it had it on Prince Street. You might wanna double-check all that.
Yeah, I'll go back and look at that. Okay.
Don't get me confused.
Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll go back and double-check that. We did plan to have that here.
That one in the village, sure. It could've been the village, or, I think, maybe on your website. I, I caught it somewhere.
Okay, we'll, we'll take a look. Thank you for pointing that out. Um, let's see, what else do we have? So no meeting on January second, the January ninth meeting will replace that. Um, we will have your regular meeting on January sixteenth as well. Um, I sent out an email, and some of you have responded, some, I'm not sure everybody's responded. I didn't get a chance to really look at my email much today. Um, if you are on the planning commission and you would like to continue, if you could just give me a heads-up, not everyone is expiring, but they do do an annual resolution to reappoint the continuing board members, as well as appointing any new board members. Um, I would say, don't worry about whether or not you think your term is expiring. If you're interested, let me know that as soon as possible, um, because the board is trying to figure out who is interested in continuing, who they could continue to appoint, um, whether or not they have applicants that might also be interested in serving on the planning commission. They generally try to make those appointments in February. Last year, I think it was the first meeting in February, and, but that was like the first year since I've been here that they actually hit the beginning of February. Um, some years it has delayed quite a bit of time because they've had difficulty getting applicants for the open positions. I think there are actually three terms that are expiring, and I'm not, I don't, I don't think those are all term limited, but even if you are term limited, don't worry about it. If you're interested, please let me know, because sometimes the board does waive those term limitations. I think they were trying to get back to a more normal process, um, where they are going to honor term limits, but I know in years past, they have felt like it was better to, um, continue on with people who were on the planning commission, rather than trying to continue to drag out and find new qualified people who could be on there. So if you could just let me know that, I can share that with the board. They asked if I could let them know by the end of this week, so Friday of this week, they would like that information. Um, the board office has, um, some new staff people, so they're scrambling a bit, trying to cover this particular job with dealing with all of the many boards and commissions that have citizens appointed to them. That, that person's pretty new. So we're trying to help out a little bit. Um, but other than that, uh, Jason, do you have anything else that you want to announce? Oh, yeah, new staff person. Um, I think you all have met Amy before. Amy's been with us for a few months, so, um, excited to have her, and she's doing just an awesome job. But we also got approved for an additional person, and part of the reason for that, and I think you've also met Caitlin, um, Caitlin was our animal control supervisor. We reorganized, so animal control and zoning are now under one program heading, and Caitlin is now our zoning and animal control manager. So she heads up both of those work groups, and, um, as part of that, that freed up a position. So we got that position reassigned to current planning, and, uh, we just made an offer to, um, a woman who will come on board as a planner too. She's relocating from Minnesota, but, um, she is, yeah, that's, although her planned vacation for January is an ice fishing trip, so I don't know about that.
I thought you were gonna drive.
I said, "Do you actually fish?" I thought that sounded pretty cold, but, um, anyway, she is going to join our staff, um, around the eighth of January, if, if her move goes as planned. Um, so we're excited about that. Just found out Friday about Julio's new plans. Um, he doesn't want any kind of fanfare, so he just kinda did this quietly and at the last minute, in spite of my yelling at him for leaving me in the lurch. So that didn't work, he didn't agree to stay. But, um, boy, I don't know if we've missed anything or not. Oh, I did wanna point out that, um, Caitlin actually just got back from about a two-and-a-half week deployment to the Virgin Islands. She went down there to do hurricane rescue work with, um, large and small animals. So, um, gave up her Thanksgiving with her family and left with only like a few days' notice and headed down there. Went with a team of, um, four of them all together, two were from Jefferson County, one from City of Aurora, who was actually an animal control officer who used to work for Arapahoe County, and Caitlin, and so, um, they did just really awesome work. We appreciated them being willing to do that. That also helped us out, actually, because we learned a lot about emergency response and, um, all the hoops that you have to jump through to get someone sent out. The Office of Emergency Management was the lead agency, but it also involved our payroll group, and our HR group, and, uh, Office of Emergency Management, and the state, um, group that we had to coordinate with, so it was, um, it was pretty complicated. It took us the whole time she was gone to like figure out how to get her paid, so that was kind of a challenge. Um, but I think that's all I have for right now. Hope everyone is having a wonderful holiday season. Um, we'll look forward to seeing you in the new year, and we'll look forward to having the new comprehensive plan. Um, you'll hear a little bit more about this as we go along, but we do plan to bring Office of Emergency Management back in after we get the comprehensive plan wrapped up. Um, as you might remember, not too long ago, we adopted the bicycle and pedestrian plan by reference as part of the comp plan. Uh, we're looking at doing the same thing with the, uh, Arapahoe County Multi-Hazards Mitigation Plan, which includes unincorporated Arapahoe County and all of the cities in Arapahoe County, with the exception of City of Aurora. They have their own hazards mitigation plan. So we were going to do a study session with them, and, um, we're looking at possibly adopting that plan also by reference into the comp plan. You can jump through some legal hoops with county attorney's office and make sure that we're not, um, doing anything awkward there, but, um, that is probably going to be a follow-up step to the...
The planning commission is approved, but not by county commissioners.
The county commissioners actually approved it about a year and a half ago. Because it has to be, under FEMA regulations, it has to be approved by the, the Board of County Commissioners. Well, just like the bike pad plan, just like the transportation plan, um, it puts people on notice that we have an assemblage of different, and the open spaces master plan, that we have an assemblage of documents that you can't just like flip to a land use map and know what you need to know about the comprehensive plan. It kinda just puts people on notice that we have a number of different plans that we're working towards implementing and incorporating into our operations, and, um, you know, it might not necessarily affect a land use approval, but we don't have a lot of areas, for example, with steep slopes where we have to worry about homeless lighting off the hillsides and such as that, that some places do have. And we have an active flood control program, so that's not such a big issue, but, um, but it's just trying to wrap all of those pieces in and create that awareness with land developers, citizens, anybody who's basically operating in Arapahoe County. And all the cities participated in that plan as well. I think only one of the cities that participated did not approve a resolution, but they did provide input even though they did not pass a resolution approving the plan. And they just had physical concerns about making financial commitments that they didn't think they had the budget for. So that's all I've got. Anything for us? Okay, well, thank you. You've had a long night.